That kind of meeting.
That would be fine, too.
Because that would be a way which it would, they don't have a, you know, what is it, what's it, something, a dog in a game where, I forgot the word you say. They're just professional facilitators who facilitate this workshop.
You know, the devil is in the details.
Yeah.
If you have a, a meeting that's, that's convened by someone other than the city council and run by someone other than the city council or someone other than the city, and the individual members of the council attend that meeting, theoretically, that's fine. It's also theoretically fine for each one of them to present a comment to whoever it is that's running the meeting. But, once you get into some sort of dialogue between the two council members, even if it's sort of like directed at one, but, you know, to the moderator, but is for the ear of the other, you end up running afoul of the sunshine law.
Well, when we had our growth meeting a couple of weeks ago, council members sat there and listened.
Yeah.
Yep.
They did not say anything to each other, nor did they make any comments.
And, and, and you, and you know that I had reservations about that meeting before it took place, and from what I understand, it met the parameters of a sunshine meeting, however, so, yeah. I mean, I'm just saying, there are limitations, and as long as those limitations are respected, the me, you know, it's, it's possible.
My, my thing is, I just want to make sure the public's able to hear the voices of the business owners, so that they hear as well, it's not only us.
Then you would prefer a council workshop?
Just because I think it would be more benefit to the public, because it would be, like, recorded and people will be able to see it. That's, that's just my thoughts, it would be...
Oh, I have no problem whatsoever with a council workshop. I was, I was just trying to understand the, the reticence of having members of the public who might speak that would somehow embarrass or make the business community difficult, uncomfortable, from a retribution perspective. And, and maybe I don't understand what your concern is or how to regulate.
No, this, this, this is not my opinion. It actually is literally like, I will only speak if I can only speak in a controlled setting type of, it's direct comment.
I understand that. Business does things totally different from government, and most of business can't even be conducted the way government conducts its business.
Yeah.
So, there's gonna need to be some little bit of understanding if we're inviting the business people, that we're not gonna be able to exclude those that may feel different from those.
Could we just call it like a, a listening session?
Yeah, listening session.
I mean, the, the school board did this years ago.
A listening session, yeah.
The superintendent went around and he did listening sessions at all the different schools. It was the former...
That's fine.
Two ago, two superintendents ago.
It's just listening, that's all this really is. We just need to hear them, so we can put it in our pot with our stuff.
I'm okay with it.
I am too.
I'm uncomfortable having it be like a council workshop. I would, because I know that in council meetings in the past where we've discussed a very hot topic, and there were business people who opined, and they were then, became, got chastised by residents. I would not want anyone to be, I feel if, if they don't feel comfortable speaking out in a public setting, then, Jahai, I think it's gonna, they're, they're not gonna share how they feel.
But the difference...
Here's, here's a suggestion, that, something from what I...
I, I want people to be able to feel, but I, I just don't want people to feel.
But this is not a hot topic. This is gonna be a listening session, it's gonna be, they give, there's no Q and A, there's none of that, just like we did at the PGI Civic Association as best Howard could. It's not a give and take, it's not an agenda item, it's not moving anything from that time. So, I think, you're right, when it was a hot topic, that's when it did get contentious. And at this point, it would be an experiment to see if it would work or not.
Is the intent for the city council to receive input from the business community, and then have an opportunity in the sunshine for the city council to discuss those concerns that were raised by members?
At a later time, yes.
At a later time, we don't have to discuss that.
Oh, at a later time?
Yeah, at a later time.
Because, because one way that you can deal with the sunshine problem, and also deal with the concerns of getting the voices of the, of the members of the business community heard, is solicit comments from the business community in anticipation of a workshop. Those, those comments don't necessarily need to identify the business owner who's making those comments. And then those comments would be presented, and you would have an opportunity to discuss those comments at the workshop.
I, I see it as no agenda, just a listening session. They, we come, they come, and at the later time, it gets summarized, just like Howard did with the other stuff. And then, at that point, it goes into the information that we use to, to move on with the master plan.
Maybe I'm not making myself clear. If they come...
Yes.
Members of the public will have the right to sit in and listen to what they have to say.
Of course, of course, we'll let them hear. I mean, yes, no problem with that. It's what, see, as long as it's not contentious, as long as there's no back and forth, people could just speaking, that's different. We, you know, like you're saying, this is not a hot topic situation. This simply is, we want to know what you feel, because that's the piece missing in our equation of data. We have master plan, we have Aqua, we're missing this piece of what our business environment actually is like.
Clearly, clearly, you can have a workshop and invite comments from the, from the business community.
Okay, so, yes, we have three yeses, four?
Yeah.
Why would we not just have, you know, we had the meeting here a few weeks ago at six or seven o'clock at night, and citizens from the community came, and it was just an open conversation. It was advertised as a public, a meeting, anybody could come to it. Why wouldn't we do that just for the business community? And other people can come and sit in on it, they so choose. But it was a very informal discussion, Q and A, that sort of thing. I don't know, is that something we can't do because of sunshine?
No, I mean, the, the concern I had was, it needs to be, you know, recorded or minutes taken at some point in time, or, or the recording available. But as long as it's open to the public, you know, that's the, that's the main thing. And as long as it meets all of the other indicia of a sunshine meeting, doesn't have to have a formal agenda and a structure, but it, it just, the purpose of the sunshine law is to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to see government in action, and if necessary, have an opportunity to comment.
And that night, everybody got to talk, including the council members that were there. So, it was a lot of Q and A, it was very general conversation. We talked a lot about budget and other things, but that might be the way to do it, make it extremely informal, so people are comfortable talking, and I thought that meeting went very well.
The budget meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, the budget.
Yeah, the budget meeting.
Yeah.
Do you want to put something together, some description?
Let me do that.
Okay.
And, and actually, I'll do that based on speaking to people, would, would they be most comfortable doing?
Okay.
That's a better way to do it.
All right.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's coming back with your description?
Yes, yes.
Okay, now we are taking a break.
Forever.
Three hours later. Oh, wait, before we do?
Yes.
Could we agree that we will just fold, have whatever discussion we come up with about, about any kind of architecture, elements, you know, the building heights and those kinds of things, and that those would be a part of what comes out of the update of the citizens' master plan? So that, because right now, we have staff working on that, and we don't know what will come out of the citizens' master, the citizens' master plan update.
They're gonna bring back the draft of the RFP.
No, no.
No, what I'm saying is...
We're also working on...
Oh.
The building height.
The building height issue, and I said, yeah, let's make that, they, let's just put that on, hold, temporarily on hold until we get the citizens' master plan update done. Then it can be a part of a, a solution that we've all...
But at the same time, we're still, like, part of what we're doing this, we're, we're gonna need professional renditions for citizens even to comment on. And so, I, I, I mean, if we're, they're almost already there, it's not gonna hurt to have this as one of the, in our pot of choices.
The, the, the staff isn't gonna be doing this, it's the, it's whoever we hire is going to be...
But, but they're professionals.
...that discussion, and I, I, I think that then we, then we get the professional consultation from, advice from whoever it is that's hired, that goes, may go along with what is being recommended, or tweaked, or whatever. So, you know, it's like, why have staff work on something when it could be tweaked and modified?
I think they're pretty much already there, I mean, they...
And, and no one knows us better than our own staff, I, I mean, in terms of professional advice.
Well, then why would we even hire somebody to come out and advise us?
Because we're doing this additional pieces, but our staff actually knows our city better than, I, I, I wouldn't get a, I wouldn't do away with that information. I think it's valuable to us.
I to, well...
I'm afraid of information.
I guess I'm not communicating.
Right, the, the way we are right now is, as a staff, we're gonna be putting together some draft land development regulations regarding building height and the changes that were presented. They then go through a process, they come back to you, you're gonna talk about it. Then they're gonna go eventually to the planning commission, then they'll go to city council. So the question is, should we continue on down that road? Or should we put together our, what we're doing, which is, which is getting there, it's gonna take some, a little more time, and just leave it for whoever we hire to review it, before we start the whole process of the planning commission and council?
Yes, that is what I agree.
Yeah, we don't have to get to the planning commission part, but I think that any person coming in, we would want to give them this ready-made thing.
The context.
Yeah, the context.
Okay, but we were heading down a different path.
I, I think we should allow whoever it is to look at that before we then start this whole approval process. Because it's, then it becomes a part of, of the overall solution that's being recommended. And then the community can embrace, because, embrace it, because we've had so much input in...
But it's part of the context, would you agree?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, I'm okay with that.
I would like to say, I would prefer, I agree with you, except, I would like to know what staff's opinion is. So I would like to take the pause after they, they share some information with us. Whether it's formally or not formally, whether it's a formal part of the process or not, I would like to know what's, because I think staff is just as much a stakeholder as a citizen or a business. And I would just be curious to know, you know, where they're coming from, because I have confidence in, in what their opinion is, and then present that to who we hire as one of the stakeholders, and then just see where that evolves from there. But I would be curious to know what the staff's opinion is, from their perspective, where we should go.
I'd definitely go, because staff is gonna be who any hired person's gonna have to referring to. This is our, this is our body of knowledge.
So I think the pause should be, may, maybe not a formal draft, but an informal presentation, perhaps, because I know that Mitchell doesn't have enough to do anyway, and, at, at a future date. Because I'd, I'd like to know what his opinion is, and I'd like to be able to share, share with you guys any conversation about that. Because, quite frankly, I think we just had a really good conversation, and I'd like to see us continue doing this.
I mean, they basically have a draft framework.
You've kinda seen it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What?
You've kinda seen it already.
We have.
I know, so I'd just like to see it just coalesced a little bit, and then, you know, and then, then take our pause. That's just me.
I feel the same. Well, we'll get it to you. But, but from what I'm hearing now...
Mm-hmm.
Is, after we draft whatever, you know, draft, we're gonna then take a pause. We're not gonna go start through the formal process.
Right, right.
We're gonna wait to see who we hire.
And use that as a context.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, Dave, you're on, you're up.
I've just, you had mentioned to me about the closing, possibly during the lunch break, is that, is that your preference?
Yes, yes.
I want, since Karen and David are...
Yeah, we're taking thirty minutes, so we'll have enough time.
Well, you're gonna, you have enough time to eat, though.
I'll sign really fast.
All right, I'm just, they're, they're set up in the mayor's office, the attorney's there, ready to close, Kristen's there, so we're all kinda set up.
So it's twelve nineteen, so we come back at, let's just do one o'clock then.
Or can we just finish now?
No, they are, they cooked all the food outside, yeah, from eleven forty-five. Yeah.
How long, all right.
So we're, we'll be back in session at one o'clock.
Slightly earlier.
Have to take that long?
I teach a class at one.
Twelve fifty, you need thirty minutes. One o'clock, we come back at one.
Take me five minutes to eat.
Excuse the Cheetos. There's cake on the second floor, but...
Third floor.
Third floor of the annex, but you don't leave yet. You can have cake after the meeting.
We still have exciting...
Third floor conference room.
We're calling the fashion police on you.
Yes.
I don't know.
Jahai?
See you up there.
That's us next time.
No, no trending. Lisa's up, next we have the kayak storage in the special residential overlay district.
Good afternoon, Lisa Hannan, zoning official. This was brought to staff's attention to bring back rules and regulations regarding kayak storage. Pontaguard is a boating community. We offer a variety of water activities for our residents and visitors. Two thousand nine, the code was amended to allow small watercrafts such as kayaks to, or canoes to be placed on the rack of a roof vehicle for two days while people get ready to go on one of the kayak trips. And then in two thousand sixteen, watercraft storage regulations were again amended to clarify the intent of kayaks and canoes or small watercraft being stored entirely within a carport or garage, whether they were on a trailer or off a trailer. The current storage regulations do permit kayaks stored completely entirely on a dock. However, they cannot be leaned up against the seawall or the seawall cap, or laid on the seawall cap in any manner. And again, they're permitted entirely within a garage or carport, whether they're on a trailer or off a trailer.
So go back to that last picture. Have we initiated code enforcement on the bottom?
I don't have any address on that.
Okay.
Since it is a, a boating community, we've been asked to bring this back, maybe a relaxation of some of the rules. We do have older homes with smaller garages, lack of storage areas. Kayaks can float off on, off the docks in high tides, if they're not secured. Here's just some items to consider. Where the, if we're going to allow the kayak racks, where are they gonna be permitted? How are we gonna secure the racks? Do we want to regulate the materials? We had a few emails that asked for them to be along the side or the rear of the residence as well. Do we want to limit the number of kayaks per rack? Or limit the number of size of the kayaks or small watercraft? Here are some examples, I just pulled these off the web, of kayak rack examples, and some of the locations. And here's some code violation examples. Some of the pictures we have been given. And I also... Councilmember Matthews provided me with some additional, additional pictures while they were out on the boat, since our code officers cannot access properties from the rear unless we are invited on to a neighbor's property or that property owner's property, or view it from a vacant lot across the canal. So we have some examples of kayak racks, kayak, different types of storage.
Go back, was that dinghy on the dock?
Yeah.
Is that a dock? What is that? It's a floating dock.
It's a floating dock.
Go back on the next, the one, right there, isn't that like a dinghy on that dock, too?
Yeah, and it's permitted.
Okay.
You wouldn't believe what we saw when we were out on the boat.
Okay, I'm kosher, I've got a dinghy on the dock.
This is only some of the pictures I took that day.
So I guess, as a staff, we just need to have some direction if we want to move forward.
We're on that one.
So we can amend the regulations, get some input.
I think that's a boat cover.
That's a boat cover.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we weren't really quite sure what that was when we, when we went by it.
It's a Loch Ness monster.
Yeah.
What kind of recommendations did people say they wanted?
It's, you know, it's one of those unintended consequences of being a boating community. You know, we allow the people to put their kayaks on their dock, but now we're saying they can't put them on a rack on their dock. Most of the comments that I got, which were forwarded to all you guys a week or so ago, but most of the comments said, you know, it's, it keeps the kayaks in much cleaner, better condition if they're able to be stored on a rack. And, and honestly, I have to, I have to say that everybody's rack that I saw was pretty respectful. I think that even though they're all made of different composite materials, everybody that, that I saw, now, this was one that was sent to me. I don't know where this picture was taken, but most everything that we saw was pretty respectful. And, and, and it was an attempt for people to keep their kayak up off the dock so that, number one, it wouldn't float away, but number two, that it keeps it cleaner underneath the kayak. Because I can tell you, when my lawn guy comes every week, the back of my boat is covered in grass and other stuff that gets blown onto the boat, and I know that it accumulates on the dock as well. So keeping it on a rack keeps it up and off of that, and, and allows the wind to go underneath it and keep the dock a little bit cleaner. But also, it attracts fruit rats and other vermin that like to live in quiet, dark little places. So, you know, it, it just happens to be one of those things that we never really addressed. But since probably two thousand seven or eight, we've become a major kayaking and canoeing community. And, and, you know, we, as Lisa stated earlier, we don't have space in our garages to keep these things. So the only other option is to keep them on the dock. And I, I think as long as, maybe we, we put some guidelines in place, but not over-regulate it to allow racks on docks. I think it makes sense. I also had a couple of comments that, the, the one picture that was in the agenda package shows kayaks inside a, a pool cage. And one person actually got really, really upset about that, said, well, how can you tell me what I can put in my pool cage and what I can't put in my pool cage? And I said, don't shoot the messenger, it was in the package, I don't, I, I don't know the logic behind it. And then the question came in about the dock boxes as well, because those are also temporary structures, if, if we're gonna, if we're splitting hairs.
And those were written into the code to allow dock boxes within certain parameters, thirty-six inches in height, on the dock only, and not attached to the seawall or seawall cap in any manner.
Okay, but they can affix these to the dock with cleats, correct, if they so chose?
If they so chose, it would be up to the building department or engineer to make sure it was structurally, or either have it removable if a storm was coming where it could be stored inside.
Okay.
The rack?
The rack, or a dock box for that matter, that they could actually screw in cleats on the dock itself? Because I have cleats on my dock for, two of my dock lines, for my spring lines. But it, it would make sense that it could be an option if somebody wanted to affix it, so they don't have to remove it every time there's gonna be a high-water episode. What do we think about this particular one that's affixed to the actual... I'm not sure what that material is that it's being held up with. I wouldn't be crazy about that, only because, you know, when I put my dock in, Par Marine told us that we should never tie our boat to the dock pilings, because we're in an area where there's a lot of shale underneath the dock. And they couldn't drive the pilings down very deep because of that. And I would be inclined to say that that's probably not the best way to store a kayak. But, again, you know, a rack on a dock, I think, I think that's probably something we should consider. Do we limit the number of, so that we don't end up with a...
I think two is reasonable, yeah.
I think two is reasonable as well.
More than two could look, because some people have very small dock.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I would rather see him on a, on a rack on a dock than in somebody's backyard leaning up against a tree or something like that. Well, that was the email that I think I forwarded, Howard forwarded, where they really hoped to have it, put it behind the... Yeah, I'm not... Behind the, the shrubbery up by the house, so that it was shielded from public view by the shrubbery, but they didn't have to carry it around to the, to the garage, so.
This looks really good.
Yeah, that looks, two on a rack is fine with me.
Yeah, and, and I think that it's respectful looking, you know, at least it looks like it's clean and it's maintained.
It does. I think it looks better than them just hanging out on the dock, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And mine did float away, so, I mean, I, I got it back, but...
Yeah.
And the, the PD has some waterproof stickers that you can put your phone number with a Sharpie. If law, you know, if found, please return. But yeah, they do, they do float away, and they do, I see that our other one has like a fabric seat, and when it sits out in the sun, it totally dry rots all of the fabric material. So I get the reason why the people want to turn them upside down. And that's more convenient, too, for use, but I would think two would, two would be the maximum.
I agree.
Do you want it to require a permit? Do you want to re, regulate the material it's made of, or anything?
No, no, no.
Okay.
So, we're talking about, it's still gonna be permissible to put a kayak on the dock. Now we're talking about, it may be permissible as well to put a, a rack for the kayaks, maximum of two kayaks per dock. And do we want to...
Per resident?
Well, we actually haven't regulated the number of kayaks on the dock, but what we're saying is kayaks may be stored on a rack, limit of two kayaks on a rack.
Do we want to max, do we want to put a maximum limit as to how high the, the rack can be in order to make sure we don't obscure neighbors' views?
I would say no, because there are some racks that are pre-built. There's one on the next street from me that is beautiful, it looks like it's burlled wood. I mean, it's gorgeous, guy obviously spent a ton of money on it. But I don't, I couldn't tell you how high it is. It holds two kayaks, but it holds them, you know, top, left to right on the kayak, what ends up being vertical rather than horizontal.
Wait, so you had a slide that had multiple rack options on it, can you go back to that, please?
But do we want to say two per residence? Because some people have two sets of docks. Do we want them to have two and two? Do we care?
I don't know why that should matter. I don't care.
I don't care. You know, it's different if you have the, the standard typical eighty-foot lot like I have versus a tip-out lot where you might have a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and thirty feet of dock. There's no reason why, you know, and they might have a bigger family, they might, you know, have a need, have a need or desire to have two racks, and it wouldn't be objectionable or obnoxious or anything like that. So maybe it could be, you know, two racks per fifty feet or something like that, a dockage or something like that, you know.
I also don't think we want to say that it, they have to put them on a rack.
Uh-uh.
No, no, I don't, I don't, I don't either. It's just that, you know, there, there are, there are people that have very nice homes with very large docks, and they've got a lot of toys, and part of being a boating community, that's part of the view.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
You know, you know, you go down the canal, you're looking at boats.
Yeah.
You're looking at kayaks, you're looking at dinghies, and you're, you may be coveting them or saying, oh, I'm glad I don't have that one, or whatever, but that's part of the experience of going up and down the canal.
So take a look at the, the, the last one on the right on the top row. There you've got a kayak rack that is having the first kayak elevated, so there's storage space underneath. Is that something that you would be okay with?
I don't think we need to get into that minutia.
I don't either, I think let's keep it simple.
Well, it, 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 here's my point. If you are concerned about the potential of having a, a rack that's so high as to maybe be in the, in the view of a neighbor, you might want to consider, if we're, if we're limiting it to two, we don't have to worry about the one in the bottom right-hand corner. But there's a difference between the rack in terms of the potential effect on neighbors' views between the first one on row, on the first top row, and the third one on the dock.
Only thing is, is a person's not gonna be able to take it off if it's too high. So I think just their height, unless they're like a giant, it's not gonna, I, I wouldn't say it'd be too...
I just want to make sure that we have the full consensus of the council as to what they're looking for.
To put it in perspective, if you have a boat lift, your boat's gonna be a heck of a lot higher than this. Absolutely. Plus the docks are, are down lower, you go down a couple steps, three steps, is it, or so?
Two, seven, three, yeah.
Down to the, to the dock level, so, you know, you're already talking about that, that first row is gonna be maybe at the...
I'm not advocating any restriction, I'm just wanting to make sure that you guys are fine.
No, I'm good. A rack cannot have more than two kayaks on it, period. Makes it very simple.
Yeah.
And since right now they're prohibited, we don't want to take any code enforcement action right now until we get our amendment in place.
A prohibition, agreed.
So it goes back to the original question, do you want to limit how many rack, racks are allowed on a dock or a property?
Well, that's what was just said a little earlier, that they, only one rack per, per, but I, honestly, I don't know what the problem would be. Because if somebody, you know, if there's a family of four, and we have a lot of families here that kayak, maybe they're, maybe they should be allowed to have more than one rack, but only put up to two kayaks on anyone given rack.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm...
I think, I think that just keeps...
Up to two per rack.
I would agree with that, Lynn.
Yeah, up to two per rack is fine, because the dock space is gonna dictate.
Right.
How many racks they can have.
Mm-hmm.
And this, you know, this is another one of those things that can be folded into the waterfront master plan when it's done. I mean, this is something that makes us a boater-friendly community, so.
Do we want to say something, though, like no other storage?
I don't think we need it.
No?
People store all kinds of stuff on their docks. I mean, I know, and, and most of the time, most of the time, and I would say probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, people are smart enough to pull things in when there's a storm coming. So you're gonna always have one or two percent of the people that, you know, forget to do it when they leave town or something like that. But I think, I think we have to rely on people being grownups and doing the responsible thing. Or all it takes is, when the water...
Their neighbor will call us if not.
Their neighbor, yes, they will.
Or when the tide is high and it goes over the top of the dock, and you realize something's floating away. Oh, yeah, I, I, we have our office upstairs, and every once in a while, I'll look down and say to my husband, um, you might want to think about going down there on the dock, bringing stuff up to the land part. But, okay.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, thank you.
We'll run it through the, run it through the mail.
That was quick. You guys are getting quicker here at this late hour. Okay, next we have recommendation from city officers, Howard.
Budget up, next meeting, we have the budget update again, and the guaranteed maximum price for the R O plant.
Nice.
Among other items, but at least those two are on.
Okay.
City attorney.
Nothing further.
City clerk.
Yes, the first item that I have, the police officers and firefighters pension boards appointed their fifth members, and that requires confirmation by council if you want to make a motion for both. If you want to make a motion for both, that would be fine.
The same two people that have been sitting in the seats?
Actually, no, Mr. Nero. Nero, he is new to fire and we have-
Oh, yeah, yeah. I got that confused with the general.
This is just a, we don't have to nominate, we just have to approve the appointments.
You're right, you're just confirming the appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments.
Second?
We have a motion, second, to approve the two appointments. All in favor? Aye opposed, carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we have no vacancies to announce.
Wow. Wow, good job.
That's a switch.
Okay, under nominations, starting with the code enforcement board alternate, we have an unexpired term. We have one eligible applicant. As always, if you would like to nominate and appoint, you may do so by motion.
Nominate and appoint Mr. Hagan, second.
We have a motion, second, to nominate and appoint Mr. Hagan. All in favor? Aye opposed, carried unanimously.
Also, under nominations, we have an unexpired term for an alternate on the historic preservation advisory board. We have four eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all.
Okay, moving to appointments. We have an unexpired term on the historic preservation advisory board, and we have five eligible applicants. Just voting for one.
Okay, we need a runoff between Mr. Gamblin and Ms. Lyons.
Okay. Here are tie-break forms.
And the appointee is Ms. Lyons.
Thank you. With the appointment of Ms. Lyons for this seat, she'll be removed from the list of nominees for the alternate seat.
Okay.
Okay, last, under appointments. We have a four-year term on the Punta Gorda housing authority. We have two applicants. Please vote for one.
And the appointee is, is Ms. Olivia.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, I don't have anything written under policy and legislation. So, we'll go to council member comments, we'll start with Jaha.
Nothing further.
Last week I got to go to the U.S. Pickleball Open in Naples. It was quite an awesome experience, and these people down there are, there's 2,000 registrants. And it was a crazy place, crazy place.
Did some of our local people play?
Yes, we had lots of people actually compete. I know that one of the board, none of the board members won medals this year, I don't believe, but one of the board members of the Pickleplex's husband won a silver medal.
Nice.
And so, yes, so, and that is, it's, it's an open for anyone, you don't have to qualify. The national tournament is in California, I think it is, and that one, you actually have to compete in different sanction tournaments to qualify, like you would in, like in the Gulf, U.S. Open, where they have, you have to qualify to get into that tournament. But this one is, is completely open. It's not a sanction tournament because the courts are not regulation size in all cases. But they have a center court that held 850 people, and CBS Sports was there telecasting, and it was quite an event.
That's cool.
Quite an event.
Where does the project stand?
We'll be going back to the county, the county's working on establishing a policy for making a donation, like what has been requested, so that, because they have a lot of other organizations laying in the, you know, just watching. So, they want to make sure they have a policy in place so that they can use that to define how they will go about. So, it's, until the county gets that done, I think it's going to be back on the agenda later this month in, you know, council, or in a commissioner workshop. But they're moving forward, working with the college and-
How much have you raised, they raised so far?
Over $300,000.
So, the last bit is what, 100?
Well, in order to, the college has said this is what we want for this phase, and so they're going to need to raise $750,000 in order to complete that-
Oh, wow, okay.
-phase, which would include, they have enough money right now to go build the first 16 courts. But the college wants the restrooms and the snack bar and certain, there are other things they have to do with the land. And so, that total is 750,000. So, we have work to do, but, you know, they're very determined and it's a significant opportunity, significant. So, it was a great experience, and I'm glad I got to go.
Thank you. Gary?
Well, first of all, I have great confidence with Nancy involved that they will come, or will have the national tournament, and not California. I totally believe that, and congratulations. I said I was going to announce something about Lynn, but I think I'll give her a break. She, well, no, I'm not going to do it. At the Block Party, Made in America did a fantastic rendition of the Blues Brothers, absolutely fantastic. And when they came off the stage, they came off to a standing ovation as they walked through the, through the tent. And bringing up the back end of the tent, backing end of their little parade, shuffling them along was our own Lynn Matthews to standing applause. No other council member will ever get as much applause as she got.
In my defense-
I could resist.
I was, I was talking to Brenda Ryan from the Block Party Committee, and I turned around and started walking back to where I was sitting, and I didn't even realize that in front of me was the whole Congo line of the band. And they were all, "Ah!" People were screaming and hollering and applause, and, I mean, the whole thing.
There was one councilman going, "Hey, Lynn, hey, Lynn!"
Yeah, making fun of me the whole time. He was totally making fun of me the whole time.
Also, the only other thing is, I think we had another great conversation today, and I hope that we can keep it up. I think it's, it's very productive for us, for our citizens, for our community. Otherwise, goodbye.
Yay.
Thank you. Okay, citizens' comments, any topic? Take the podium. You got to come to the microphone. Yep, you got to state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Joan Haner. As I told you this morning, I am the new kid in town. I moved here from Seminole County, 30 years, to Florida, if you're familiar. I'm here because a real close friend of my son-in-law, Butch Aronoff, said, "This is where your mom wants to go." I put my foot on the ground, he was right. I'm a retired educator. I'm absorbing every single thing that I can here, because it, the flavor is just heaven. I went to the meeting that Mr. Koenig ran at the Civics Association. I spoke a little bit, but it was not a nice night. The only thing I have, I feel committed to, to, compelled to comment on, does any, are any of you familiar with Seminole County? Okay, well, I lived there for 30 years. When it looked, the villages looked like this, and I saw them develop over a period of 30 years, good and bad. I'm compelled to speak because of that presentation by the young man in the video, he's, they just, there's no comparison to what they're looking at. Please, I suggest, will you look at Winter Park and Winter Garden, which are parallel growth to the, of this community, upscale? They're boating communities, not like this, because they're not on golf or anything, but they're the same structure. They've retained all the historic value. They have a big central park in both, Winter Park, which is larger than your park here, not one car, not one problem, everybody's park. They retained their, the way they were in control of the community. And you're going to be, you're going to get negative input, just like teaching a class. Some are going to like it and some aren't. Let it, it has to go. You're there to contribute and do the best you can, and you know what's right. But I just say, please, take a look at these two comparisons, Winter Garden, Winter Park, Florida, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' comments, any topic? Yes, are you coming? Anybody else? Line up behind Ms. Mueller, please.
Wendy Mueller. The, the one thing I just want to say is, charrettes first, and then structured business forum afterwards. We need everybody's input and enable them to be in classes. Jaha said businessmen, well, now we're signaling out one group of people. If we had charrettes of all the different groups, all at the same time, and then brought it together in one business, you know, someone's business that we hire, that's the way to go. Backwards doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else? Anybody else? Line up.
Pat Niles, Gateway Point. I just want to correct this, what I said under oath at the last meeting, I said, and it's probably not important to anybody but me and my sponsor, that I said 34 years coming up in June, it's 33. One of the nice things, though, in recovering, is you don't sit and count the days, or the weeks, or the months anymore. You start getting into things like city, when you get into the years, you get into city council and things like that, so you're not counting days anymore and all that. Now, you pay attention to things that are important to your community. I went to two of the assisted living meetings, very, very interesting. Carrie Hussey was the one who ran the two that I was there. I met Kurt also at the, at the last meeting, and he went to the verandas and at Gulf Breeze. And I went over to those two places, because I hadn't been there before, and I had a chance to talk to the two women that explained to me the process that they do at those, at those two places here in Punta Gorda. Very, also very informative. Got to stop looking at you. And so, I appreciate all that that is done. It was handed to me that there is a catalog of affordable housing opportunities here in Charlotte County. Most of it is listed Punta Gorda and Port Charlotte, but there are 19 different places. So, that type of information is available at the housing services for Charlotte County. If you want to know how many people who are part of our, important part of our community that have had help with regard to affording. So, there's 19 places, and you can get that right at the county, at the county level. It was mentioned about, I, maybe I don't need these now. I had mentioned at the last meeting about free lunch. It was intended to be the Peace River Forum. It is a group that there are those at the city council who go to it regularly. You meet all levels of individuals at all levels of government who do presentations on things that involve all of us here in Punta Gorda, as well as being residents of Florida. And the intent of that was to invite owners of the downtown empty lots to go and get a chance to meet people, plus the residences, and give their intentions of what they'd like to do with their empty lots. Since you're doing what you're doing, maybe this could be something that's a follow-up after everyone is on the table, what they're going to do, and you can all have a nice lunch over at the Isle Shot Club. So, that was the purpose of that. So, I sincerely thank what you're all doing here. It certainly is very helpful, and I think the only reason that one gentleman was angry, or there were a couple that were angry at that meeting and spoke up. Thank you.
Anybody else? Because he's the last call. You have to get out of your seat and line up behind Mr. Gamblin.
Yes, Brad Gamblin, just a couple of comments, sitting through this long meeting and other meetings. We have an opportunity, a rare opportunity, in my opinion, for a city, any city, to really do this right, to bring in and come up with something that will be lasting and beautiful, and that we can be proud of, that will satisfy the needs. Remember, the main asset we have here right now is our residential community, and a fairly wealthy one at that. Just frankly, because the Isles are here, it's 5,000 homes value. We have a huge complex coming across the river. It is all an opportunity. I would suggest that we move with reasonable haste, because I think that if we don't move, everybody else will, developers and other groups. There's nothing wrong with development. We need it, we have to have it, we can embrace it, or we can fight it. I'd much rather embrace it and get them on board with, with projects and us leaving, leading with some guidance, so we can have something we're truly proud of and is truly economically viable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say on the, piggyback of the affordable housing, I did attend a coalition on food banks and hunger in Charlotte County, and 2-1-1 is your resource if you need affordable housing. You need to know where food banks are, you need to know where shelters are opening in the county during storms. 2-1-1 is the number. They're connected with all the departments of the county, so you don't have to navigate the county system. You can simply call 2-1-1, and they'll give you all the information you need on any kind of human services out there, so don't forget that. Direct people to 2-1-1, because they are very helpful, and the lady that runs it is amazing. So, with that, we are adjourned.